Okay, the first item on the agenda is to accept and modify the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Community participation. Community participation is a time intended for the public to give input or relevant school issues and not intended to be a question and answer period, as this may be the first time the board has heard this information. Please do not expect individual responses or comments by the board at this time, but be assured that these concerns will be reviewed. Please print your name on the sheet at the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Have anybody like to come speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Reports. Superintendent, Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As of September 30th, our enrollment numbers were 4,984 students, so that's a little bit shy of what we had budgeted for, but that's where we landed. We were able to capture quite a few of those students that we had not made contact with on the first day of school, so that did push us up there a little bit. Warren County Schools has had its first positive COVID-19 case. There was no exposure in the school. We've also published our COVID-19 dashboard to the website. It is updated daily. The dashboard board notifies the public of active and contact cases for both students and staff. The dashboard also provides a designation of open or closed for each school. At this time, I'd like to thank, say thank you to the entire Warren County School community for continuing to monitor and inform the school when someone has had an exposure. Parents and staff members are doing an excellent job with monitoring and doing the self-check, and through their efforts, we're able to keep our doors open. So, there is a lot of communication going on, and I wanted to say thank you to everybody involved that's helping us work through this. It is truly a community effort to keeping our doors open. Secondary schools will have what we're calling a reboot week, starting October the 12th. This is a remediation week, and will also be used for teachers to evaluate and modify current practices. There are student, parent, and staff concerns that we need to address, and a reboot is a great way to review and modify our current practices. Elementary schools plan to have a reboot in a couple of weeks when the rest of the devices are in. That way, they will be able to work on the Schoology, the platform, and to do some training for those students that do not have the device yet. So, elementary will have a reboot week in a couple of weeks. Because of concerns that we are addressing now within our remediation week, we will need to hold off on adding additional days at the secondary level. Students, parents, and teachers need to be comfortable with our current process before we phase any additional days into the schedule. We will continue to plan, but not add until we are stable in our current process, with our current processes and practices. So, you know, this reboot is to help us realign and to address some of the concerns and some issues that we're currently having. And so, we need to put that on hold for now, because we need to be proficient in what we're doing now with our current practices. Warren County Schools were awarded $266,946 through the Governor's Emergency Education Relief, or GIRS, set aside. These funds will be dispersed through eight different programs within the system. I also wanted to inform the board that I met with Ms. Mary Ann Biggs concerning the teacher grants that are awarded through the Warren County Education Endowment each year. We are going to go ahead and offer those this year. The application process will start next Friday, October 16th. In our discussion, we thought that it was a great time to give those teachers some support, because this is a new, this is new to them, and so, this could help them in providing them funds for new initiatives that they may want to try within this new educational environment. So, those will go out, or those will be available October 16th, and they will close on November 4th. Over the next three meetings, I have scheduled principals to deliver an update on the start of the school year. Tonight, I have with us Mrs. Jordan, Warren County High School, Dr. Smith, Skyline High School, Mrs. Goobler, Warren County Middle School, and Mr. Johnston, Skyline Middle School. They have brought with them tonight student representatives, and will discuss how school is going so far. At the October 21st meeting, elementary principals will come and give an update on how school is going on at the elementary site. So, Mr. Ballantyne, if we can, we may need to move that to Diversified Minds on that, that'll be our work session. And then on November 4th, we will have Blue Ridge Technical Center and Diversified Minds come in and talk about how the start of school has been going on for them. We have faced many challenges this year. We are constantly addressing those challenges, and we will continue to make sure that we focus on the health and safety of our entire community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Ballinger. Next up will be middle school updates. Ms. Goobler and Mr. Johnston. How y'all want to do it, but come on up and...
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, good. I am lucky enough to have with me today Melissa Zook, one of our eighth grade students, who contacted me over the summer because she made with her Girl Scout troop 70 masks and donated to the school. So, I thought she would be a great voice for us. I'm going to show you just a couple slides that we put together. We sent out to our English teachers and asked them to get some quotes from our students. So, we'll have Melissa's voice, but also some of the voices of students from our school. So, to come into the building, Mr. Fox years ago got the mascot, and one of our teachers decided the mascot had to have a mask this year. And you can see the procedures that are going on in all the schools, when the day starts with the temperature checks, both in fifth grade and in sixth or eighth grade. Some of our students go outside for lunch, it just depends on the teacher, and then some of the students are in the classroom for lunch, but they're all spaced and, of course, they have Melissa's phone. Oh, take your T-shirt, she'll tell you a little bit about lunch. This picture on the right is actually Melissa's classroom, which is the library, which is now one of our classrooms for our algebra group, and the other room is one of our computer rooms. Just some pictures of our staff, and just the teachers making the best of it. So, the young man here is dissecting an owl pellet, which is one of our favorite sixth grade activities, and the young lady here is in PE class and just, you know, making the adaptations for the kids to have PE. Kids leaving, and we have banners at both of the entrances that our fifth graders use, and then you can just see our social distancing as the kids leave for the day. These are the quotes from the kids. The English teachers did set us up, they asked the kids to tell us something positive about the school, how it was going, and we just wanted to have some voices from some of our children. The next slide is some thoughts that they have for our teachers as well. Is everybody okay seeing that? So, I especially like the one in pink that says, "I wish my teachers knew that they're doing a great job," because I do feel like our teachers are being really hard on themselves, and they, like our students, want it to be as much with the academic push as we can, but there's a lot of learning with Canvas and everything else, and I just think everyone is doing a really good job. There's a lot of learning curve, and we're moving forward day by day, and I'm going to let you hear from our student, because I know that's who you want to hear from. So, go ahead, Melissa.
Hello, I'm Melissa Zook. I am in eighth grade of Warren County Middle School. So, some of the cons, well, some of the complications and challenges that I've had during the school year so far is that, um, sorry? We're not in school the whole time, so it's sometimes hard to grasp a subject that you're new to. Like, I started Spanish this year, and I'm not that good at it, so it's kind of hard to understand and learn the subject when you're not in there the whole time, but you can sort of meets with your teachers, and you can email them, and sometimes you can get a better work on that. And another thing is, some of the teachers are not always enforcing the mask policy, so some of them are letting them move their mask below the nose, and they're not separating students when they get too close to each other. Another thing is, Canvas is this system that we are using this year that doesn't always load, and sometimes we cannot get our assignments up and complete them when we are supposed to. Another thing is, sometimes when we try to submit the assignments we are working on, it doesn't fully submit. So, it says submitted, we go off, and a couple days later, it says the assignment itself is missing. So, sometimes students get marks off for that assignment, because it is late when they actually turned it in days prior. Some good things that have happened so far this school year is that every desk is spaced out evenly, even the classroom I am, which is the largest classroom, I believe, in the school with around 15 students in it most days, even if we got up instead, besides our desks, there is plenty of room in there spaced out from other students in lunchtime. So, during lunchtime, the carts, they have a cart, and they go around school, bringing lunch every single classroom for students who need it, and it is brought to us without contamination, and is brought to every single desk. In the hallways, there are markers on the floor of where to go and how to get to your classrooms, so one stair you go, stairway you go up, the other you go down, and they're placed six feet apart, so everyone knows where to stand when they're going through the hallway, so they're separate from other students. And the last thing is the drop-off. It is quick and easy, and it's very well organized. You pull up in your car, they take your temperature, you get out, you get hand sanitizer, and you go in the building, and there's masks if you need it, and there's also lunch outside, and if you, I mean, sorry, breakfast outside if you needed to, so you can grab breakfast if you hadn't had it prior.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for us?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, all. I want to thank Dr. Ballinger and the board for having us up. I have Emma Stesel with me, she's one of our eighth graders at Skyline Middle School, and she'll dress you after I do, but just to give you some information, I do not have a fancy PowerPoint, so I do, and Goobler did a really nice job, though. You know, after planning all summer, it was really good to get students back into the school, although they're really, really quiet. A teacher reported to me when she said, after lunch, "Hey, you all are allowed to talk." And the student says, "We know, we just don't want you to hear our conversations." When they're six feet apart, they have to talk a little louder, so it's funny to see them interact. But on the whole, things, I think, have started out pretty positive as comparison to where they could be, and I can't say enough about the work our teachers are doing. They are doing such a great job, and they've put so much into the process. We've told our teachers that success looks a little bit different this year. We gave them four things to stress on in terms of what to really look for for success, and we gave a very specific order to these. One, are, am I and my students getting better each and every day? Are students becoming independent learners? Are students being engaged, and are they learning the material? We picked that order, because if they don't follow that order, students aren't going to learn. If they're not getting better, if they're not an independent learner, and if they're not engaged, they're not going to learn. So, we have had some challenges, of course, technology, internet issues, and things like that, students' challenges with Canvas, as we heard earlier. Hybrid teaching has been a challenge, but we've overcome, and I cannot speak enough for the tech department, Mr. Grant and his staff has done an excellent job being responsive to those. Of course, we've had disciplinary situations that are new to all of us with Google Meet, but we've worked to overcome those, and we've collaborated as a county to get better there. All of us are relearning our routines. We all feel like first-year teachers, how to turn in late work and help students understand what a virtual routine looks like as they come in. But whether the student is in front of them, at their kitchen table, or hanging out on their bedroom, in their bedroom, we've stressed with the teachers that our goal is to educate them, and to educate our students. Engagement of students has also been a concern, which is one of the reasons why we do the reboot week. We want to make sure that our students are doing more than just logging in and shutting off the camera and going and playing Xbox. So, we have come up with it, we're working on coming up with different ways. Skyline Middle School has been, gained a grant from the federal government through our SIG funds, and I don't know if I'm stepping over my boundaries in stating this, but it'll allow us to purchase a program called PairDeck, and PairDeck allows us to do formative assessments with our students in real time, so other students can't see other students' responses, and so it's just between them and the teacher, and it's a good way for students to interact. Positives that we've seen are less experienced teachers than our veteran teachers are stepping up and making, they're making training videos, they're putting out training videos, they're running trainings, they're being creative in all the things that they are doing. Our teachers have reimagined the way their classrooms looked. Many of our teachers took off with these new ideas and implemented different platforms, like FlipGrid, which is a video platform for students to show their learning, Jamboard, which is an interactive sticky note board where students can post questions during a lesson, and the teacher can answer those later. And so, we're also partnering with parents, doing one-to-one, excuse me, one-to-one trainings with them when they have problems with their technology, so we'll bring them in. The tech will sit down, the tech coach will sit down and work with them. All of our students and teachers are working really, really hard to build those relationships. We knew at the beginning of the year that those relationships were going to be key for our students to be successful, and so we're sending out newsletters, telling the parents, "Hey, this is what's coming up next. This is what, these are the challenges that we've had." So, a lot of great collaboration there. But I wanted to share an email that one of my veteran teachers, just to wrap up, sent to the staff, and he would tell you that he has never in his time with the school system sent an email to the full staff, and so I just want to share that with you while I end. "With all sincerity, in all my years of teaching, I have never been more proud of a school staff. I have watched the last month as we have all put our hearts and souls into this job in order to help and provide the best education possible for the kids of Warren County. While experiencing high levels of anxiety and frustration, I have seen folks grind and persevere. A true statement to everyone's willingness to get out of their comfort zone in order to get the job done. We will all learn from the many mistakes to be made along the way, but that's what will pay off and make this year even more rewarding. Thanks to the entire staff and for your tireless efforts. Keep it up." So, I will now turn it over to them.
Hi, I'm Emma Stesel, I'm an eighth grader at Skyline Middle. I think I can speak for most students when I say that we never expected our school year to look like this. There have been ups and downs, good times and bad times. All of my teachers have gone the extra mile to make the best of this situation. They have given us all lots of grace to complete our assignments. They spend extra time making videos that we can watch to learn the content. They are constantly adapting and changing to make sure they can teach us in the best way possible. Our first hybrid day was rough. If the teacher was talking to the class and wasn't right next to their computer, the online kids couldn't hear them. Nevertheless, as soon as they heard this, they walked around with their computer to make sure the online kids could hear them. When we've had technology issues, they've adapted again to make it work for us. On my in-person days, all of my teachers have a smile on their face. You can never tell the challenges they might have faced that day. I have encountered a few problems with things not working, and when I do, emailing my teacher always works. Almost always, I get a reply within the hour, even on the weekends. I truly believe that you see a person's true character when they are given a challenge like this. I can tell you for certain that the teachers, administration, and staff at Skyline are some of the kindest, hardworking, and most caring people I'll ever meet. Thank you.
Thank you, girl. Thank you so much. Next up, we have the high school, and we'll start with Ms. Jordan, please.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Ballinger. Board, we're very pleased to be here this afternoon to tell you a little bit about how the beginning of Warren County High School has gone this strange year. To quote Vivian Green, "Life isn't about waiting for the storm to pass, it's about learning how to dance in the rain." Members of the board, at Warren County High School, we are learning how to dance in the rain. A rocky start filled with uncertainties, apprehensions, and fears is beginning to level out. Now, after a month into the school year, I will continue to describe the school session in the same way, however, the panic is finally beginning to ease. As educators, we are learning to replace our fears, because we lack experience, with an openness and willingness to learn the new requirements of teaching and learning. Lifelong learning has taken on a renewed meaning. It's no longer a choice, it's a necessity. We are adjusting. Many have expressed feeling like they have been returned to being a first-year teacher. We're eager, but very unsure. Either way, we are and we will be committed to making sure that learning continues. For our students, the results are as different as the number of students who are enrolled. They too are faced with learning new skills and tasks. Some of these skills were not so necessary in different times. Previously, there was always a teacher there readily available to monitor progress and to encourage or redirect as needed. But now, learning how to self-assess has become a new essential skill. For our students, the choices about how to manage time has increased. Sometimes it's difficult to choose to attend a virtual class when it's so pretty outside like today, and they can put it off until later. It's difficult for some adults, too. Some students are being very successful and are progressing. However, our data shows that more students than in the past are finding it challenging to be successful in this new learning environment. We are responding to these challenges by offering one-on-one opportunities by appointment to help students get caught up with content. We are offering onsite opportunities for students to receive help with technology as needed. For those for safety reasons who are hesitant to be in the building, we are arranging individual Google Meets with them and with the parents when necessary to help them feel more comfortable with the new requirements. General contacts with families, as well as individualized contacts, are ongoing. Most of all, adjustments are made continuously in an effort to make sure that our students remain academically competitive with their peers across the state. Today, I have two students with me who will speak to you about their experiences with virtual learning at Warren County High School. Here to talk about the good, the bad, and hopefully not too much of the ugly, are seniors Emily Johnson and John Daniel Pond IV, better known as Johnson.
Hello, I'm Emily Johnson, I'm a senior at Warren County High School, and with my experience so far, online school has been pretty challenging, but teachers are thankfully very patient whenever it comes to issues with internet or students having excuses about not being there. Most of the time, they will extend the time to turn in work, because they understand that we have lives outside of high school. But personally, as seniors, I can say that we were not ready for this school year to be our senior year. It wasn't very ideal, because we want to go and see our friends and our favorite teachers, but everyone has been pretty understanding and patient whenever it comes to assignments. Our faculty works their hardest to make sure that we are comprehending and understanding most of our material, but for hands-on learners, it's pretty difficult to comprehend material virtually. But this school year has taught me that school really does need to come first, because even though we have lives outside of school, education is way more important than anything else to me, so, yeah.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the school board, my name is Jackson Pond. I am a senior at Warren County High School and Mountain Vista Governor's School. I was really looking forward this year as a senior, but as it turns out, it didn't go quite as planned. I was looking forward to being with my friends, you know, being the top of my class and running the school, but it kind of got a little messed up. But, yeah, so, the virtual learning has been, it's been kind of tough for, like she said, hands-on learners like I am, and I know a lot of students are, and they struggle, they struggle with trying to understand the concept, because I know when you're in a school environment, you're focused and there's less distractions around you, and I know when you're at home in virtual, you have that urge to always go on your phone, or go on your Xbox, or, you know, hang with your friends, and it can be tough. And I think the challenge is, is that virtual learning is, you know, hard to pay attention. And, and I was looking forward to sports returning this year, and, you know, I was looking forward to football, but that didn't turn out quite as planned, and it's been tough, it's been tough, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight, and thank you.
I do have one additional thing, if you'll give me a second. At Warren County High School, we are trying to recreate some type of normal activities like we usually do. So, the faculty and staff asked me to welcome Dr. Ballinger to the area and to have him to participate in something that we have found it gives us a little bit of fun. So, we're saying to Dr. Ballinger, "Happy Valen-" not Valentine's Day, all right, "Happy Halloween," okay, and because we do this Valentine's Day also. Happy Halloween, and the students have a little gift to give you, so you have been officially booed, Dr. Ballinger.
Last but not least, Dr. Smith, please.
Dr. B, members of the board, thank you for having me here today. I'd just like to take a few moments to let you know how things are going at Skyline High School. I'm going to start from the very beginning, what day one looked like. We were trying to have some levity when the kids came in, because we know they were all very nervous, as were the teachers, so we had our Hough, which is one of our new teachers who was volunteered to do that, he was a good sport. We put these slides on our website to show parents. And a little bit about new experiences, when school began on September 8th, students and staff did not know what to think. Nervous, anxious, and bewildered explains the atmosphere since day one. Teachers were in the process of learning a new LMS, how to be a virtual teacher, and how to not let the situation control their life. The dedication of our teachers has been unimaginable. They are putting in more time than they did while in the brick-and-mortar setting, and they have discovered that teaching virtually is a lot harder than teaching one-on-one or in the building. And also to try to boost morale, we're having these themes every Thursday and Friday for the staff. We had Eighties Weekend, and if you look on the left, make sure you notice Mr. Lee there, my assistant principal. So, we're trying to bring a little, little, a little life, I guess, into the building, having the teachers participate in this stuff, and they're all doing a good job, kids seem to like it, and, yeah, and it's amazing, I let teachers wear jeans in there, they're ecstatic, I don't understand that. And we're even doing our state mandated drills, here's a fire drill we did. Now, some of the data that I've collected, right now, Skyline, we have 53.6% of our students are hybrid, 2.8% are non-hybrid. students are hybrid, 2.8 are virtual, but they do go to Blue Ridge Tech Center on Wednesdays, and 43% of our students are all virtual. Some of the troubleshooting that we had to do, for safety in the building, we did temperature checks, like all schools do at the entrance. Technology, I want to thank Tim and his crew for all they've done. They've been amazing, and they're well-deserved of their praises. Simple tasks such as taking attendance has now become a lot more complicated, and teacher stress is beyond belief when we were beginning. So in the trenches, we have our teachers. They've resented with an unbelievable task to teach in person, online, and sometimes at the same time. They are trying to learn how to take what they would normally cover in a 90-minute class into a 50-minute period, teaching six classes at once instead of four. Pacing and mapping have been replaced with flexibility and patience. Our staff, that's Ms. Dotson, our head secretary, we had Cam O'Dea, too. Not only are students, teachers, and parents dealing with different responsibilities, our secretaries and bookkeepers are receiving phone calls from parents on a variety of topics. But most notable are the technology issues, and our staff takes such pride in their job and their knowledge that they are frustrated when they get a phone call from a parent about a technology question, they can't answer it. But they are doing a great job. They're being commended for the job they do and how flexible they are each day. We couldn't do our job without them. Now, our students are new normal. We do have PK in the building. As you can tell there, there's one of our PK. They are actually, when you get the little, things get to you a little bit, I just walk down to the library and see these little ones and brighten your day up a little bit. So just like teachers, students find themselves with many obstacles, taking six instead of four classes, learning through a computer, learning to organize their time between school and work. And perhaps the most frustrating for students is not having the in-person connection they get in the school. The social and emotional issues are more concerning to me at this point than the content. And some lessons that we're learning. Skills and knowledge students are unknowingly learning will help them to adjust to a world that is ever-changing and might be turned fluid instead of flexible. Time management, organizational skills, and patience are concepts that students seldom thought of in the normal brick-and-mortar setting. And no matter what the future holds for our students, I believe this experience will result in learning experiences that are not yet known. Now, I'd like to introduce Will Wolfe, who's one of our seniors.
Dr. Smith misspelled my last name, it's not spelled "D." How's it going? My name's Will Wolfe. I'm a senior at Skyline High School. I'd like to thank Dr. Smith for allowing me to come to speak on behalf of the Skyline student body. It is different, to say the least. In March, everyone's world was turned upside down, and no one expected it. Teachers have had to adapt to an abnormal year. I mean, they've been under high levels of stress and anxiety, and they've dealt with it in the best possible way they can. They've shown how they deal with adversity, and they've done it in the best possible way. As for students, not every student's in the same learning environment, and not every student has the same internet, so that's very challenging. So not every student has the same fair chance to learn the curriculum they are given. Kids have jobs during the day. We want to talk about student engagement. I know firsthand that when we go Google meets, especially my English class, there's 22 kids in that class, well, five students show up. But when we go in-person, the kids that are supposed to be in-person, they are all there. They have perfect attendance. So when we are in school, engagement is higher, and that makes sense. But I feel like firsthand, kids having jobs, it's not okay. We're all in this together. There's not much more to be said about this. We've done the best we can with the circumstances we were given. I'd like to appreciate y'all taking the time to be out here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Thank you all very much.
Nice presentations.
I would like to thank everybody that showed up tonight, and if the students would like to go home now because you've got things to do, I understand. But thank you so much for giving us your insight. Have a good evening. All right, next will be reports from the school board. We'll start with Mr. Rinaldi.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In partnership with Falkir County Construction Technology Teacher, we had an opportunity to film us pouring a stamped concrete job. So with approval from Falkir County, and I called Ms. Shepherd, and she gave me the okay, we filmed the actual pouring and stamping of a concrete job. In about a week and a half, we'll go back and, boy, it's hard with this mask. We'll go back and seal it, and the final job will be done, and we're going to film that, too. This will be shared with the Warren County Construction Technology people. So I wanted to thank Warren County for letting us do this and Falkir County. It was a great experience. We have to edit the film because there was a little bit of language that showed up, so we had to edit the film. So that's being done now, and hopefully, within a couple of weeks, that'll be done. So I certainly enjoyed it, and so did the technology teacher from Falkir. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rinaldi. Ms. Bauer?
I have no report, but I just want to thank everyone for the phenomenal job we're doing, trying to get through this crisis. And I know it's going to continue to change, and you'll be right there to make those changes and make it work. So thank you.
Mr. Wells?
I'll echo what Ms. Bauer said. I don't think any of us that have sat up here for any, like, the time doubted that the most important element of our school system are our teachers and our staff. And if this doesn't show it to the public in a much stronger way, and to the students and to the parents, that our teachers care about their students, they care about their profession, and it is a profession that they have chosen to take on, I don't know what can. And we appreciate everything that they've done. We're going to make mistakes, we're going to make missteps, and hopefully, they feel comfortable enough to reach out either to one of us, to Dr. Ballinger, to their principals, and make it known. And, you know, you just ask that if they have a concern, that they also possibly have a solution that they might suggest that we might work with them on. But excellent job so far by everybody.
Hi, Mr. Wells. Dr. Pence?
Thank you. The Mountain Vista Governor's School Governing Board met on September 17th, and Dr. Williamson announced that she will be retiring as director of Mountain Vista in January, so there's currently a director search going on. And so she's, of course, seeing everything through until someone new steps in. We also, we're updated that the Governor's School will continue to stay all virtual through this first semester because it's going really well. All the school divisions are doing different programs in days of the week, so they feel like their virtual program is doing well. They're going to stick with it. We'll meet again December 3rd, and they'll update us on plans for the spring. And they've added on Wednesday an addition of activities to help students address stress and deal with the online challenges for their learning because, of course, the Governor's School is very hands-on and very intensive, so they're doing some extra efforts for those students as well, starting on Wednesdays. And then beyond that, I would just say, hopefully, every teacher and staff member in Warren County hears and really hears what the students that were here tonight had to say because they, really above everything else, just seemed so appreciative of their teachers, and they can really see all the hard work that's going into trying to make this school year so successful for them. So we can appreciate it and thank them, but it means a lot coming from the students.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Pence. And, Dr. Pence, exactly, sitting here, listening to the two eighth graders and then the seniors, you know, it's very heartfelt for those children to say what they said. And I can't imagine being in their shoes because young Mr. Pond was speaking of he's hands-on when he learns. And there's a lot of people that way, so that's another difficulty for the children that they're facing. And you've got to give them a lot of credit for standing up there and speaking their heart. And you can tell they truly do like their teachers and the administrators. You can tell. I mean, Mr. Wolfe said, "Look, Dr. Smith spelt my name wrong." But Dr. Smith was quick. He came back, said, "I just wanted to see if you were paying attention." So that's good, they have that rapport, and I think that means a lot because school is about relationships, as we all know. I mean, that's all it is. That's how we learn. We learn better by the people we respect. And it's a tough year, but I thank our teachers and administrators, the staff here. Everybody has worked together to get through everything that's been thrown in front of us. Are we perfect? Absolutely not, but I don't know anybody that is. So we'll keep pushing ahead, we'll keep doing the right thing, and we'll learn from our missteps or misfortunes. And Dr. Ballinger, I think you and your team have done a wonderful job at that this year. I mean, you're new to the school system, you're new to the virtual learning system we have, so you guys have attacked everything head-on. And I know as a board, we greatly appreciate the time and energy that you guys put into it because you care, not because it's your job, but it's because you care. And that means a lot. It means a lot to us, it means a lot to our community, and I look forward to where we'll be in another six months, hopefully back in school. Because that's the biggest thing I hear, is, "Boy, I wish the kids could go five days a week." And like even the young children that are going four days, I was sitting with a parent last Thursday, and they said, "Man, it's great they go four days, but I sure wish they went five." I'm like, "Why?" Because they miss. It wasn't a hardship of the child being at home, it was just because they missed all that interaction. And that one day online is tougher for them. So I tried to explain, "We understand, but we can only do what we can do right now, and hopefully in the near future, that will change." So that's all I have. Moving on, action agenda. Approval of 2020-2021 Gifted Advisory Committee. Ms. Walton?
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Denise Walton. I'm the Testing and Gifted Education Coordinator. The Virginia Regulations Govering Educational Services for Gifted Students states that each school division may establish a local advisory committee composed of parents, school personnel, and other community members who are appointed by the school board. The Warren County Public Schools Local Plan for the Education of the Gifted includes a plan for the establishment of a local advisory committee. I ask that you consider the list of nominees for appointment to the Gifted Advisory Committee.
Any questions for Ms. Walton? I've read it, and it looks fine in there.
We appreciate their service.
Absolutely, we appreciate their service.
I move that the school board appoint the proposed nominees to the Warren County Public Schools Gifted Advisory Committee for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Walton. Acceptance of donation, Ms. Baker.
In fall of 2018, we entered into a partnership that is known with Ford Motor Company and with Marlow Motors here in Front Royal. That program is called ACE, and that is the Automotive Career Exploration Program that Ford Motor runs. And our partnership with Marlow, Emily Beck-Marlow and Ed Sullivan, brought it to our attention, and we have been working with them. Last March, right before we shut down, Ford Motor Company informed us that they had an automobile that they would like to donate to us. Mr. Sullivan brought it into Marlow, they detailed it, ran it through everything to make sure that it is operating perfectly, and we shut down. So it has been sitting there, waiting on us since March. They have reached out. Now that we are back in session, they know that our students are looking forward to getting their hands on newer motors, newer electronic systems, newer sensor systems, and all of that is part of our NATAF accreditation, which will occur this year. So when you talk about a perfect plan, while March may not have been part of it, everything that has happened since then in our relationship with Marlow Motors has been perfect for us as a technical center with an automotive technician program. So I would ask that you would accept their donation of the 2014 Ford Focus so that we may use it in conjunction with our automotive technician program there at Blue Ridge Technical Center.
Questions? Comments? Motion?
I move that the donation of a 2014 Ford Focus to the Blue Ridge Technical Center by Marlow Motors and the Ford Motor Company's ACE program be accepted with gratitude.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Thank you. And one final comment, because you can't get away from here that fast. We have two students that, within the next two weeks or so, will be starting an internship with Marlow as well.
Great, that's great.
So they're a wonderful community partner. Thank you.
Yes, they are. Thank you very much. All right. Anything else to add? All right, meeting adjourned.